This conference will now be recorded.
Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Webb will not be with us during the work session, but we do have three commissioners constituting a quorum. We'll go ahead and start the work session. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the rest of the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. And we'll go ahead and start with Board Communications, Commissioner Bangs.
Board Communications, I was very impressed at our county fair with how well managed and how well-run everything was. We had a heavy load of volunteers. It seemed that, you know, folks were out and about. Some were masked, some were unmasked. I love seeing that personal choice and that personal responsibility of folks. And overall, it was just a wonderful experience for the kids that were involved. So I'm just grateful that we were able to have such a wonderful county fair. And a shout out to Lumsato for all of the generosity that they did in regards to support for our community kids. Very impressed.
Great. Thank you for that update, Commissioner Bangs. I'll turn it over to Lumsato and Commissioner Toyaoka.
Wow, I'm synonymous. No, no, you know, it's an honor. And the youth of our community, that's why we're all here. It's our future. And to support those kids is to support, help support the future of Clatsop County. And that's what we're all about. So that was wonderful. And it was great seeing the kids out there and, you know, responding and doing what they love and, you know, interacting. It was wonderful. And, you know, kind of segues into some of the discussions I've had with county manager this week, you know, some of the K-12 guidelines as we come into our school year, you know, hopefully we can build on that momentum and have our kids in school and their routines, their not only educational development, but their, you know, emotional development, their physical development, everything needs to happen in that, you know, K through 12 environment. So looking forward to seeing that happen. And then we asked some other discussions on from, you know, some of our topics today. So I think I won't, I'll kind of stop there and let it lead to the agenda items to bring up more items to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyaoka. And we will have a public health update added to the agenda. That will be our fourth item added to the agenda today. I'll reserve some comments for that. Also, I don't know if I did last time, but I wanted to thank county manager Boone and our interim public health director, Margot, for the chamber breakfast being available for that and answering questions from business owners and others that attended the chamber breakfast last week. I don't know if I had mentioned that last time, but thanks again for being there. We'll go ahead and move on to our topics here. First topic is the introduction of the new Veteran Service Officer.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner. My name is Amanda Raffentruck, and I'm the Management Policy Analyst for Clatsop County. I'm very excited to introduce Josh. I also want to acknowledge that we have Viviana Matthews on here, who's the Executive Director of Clatsop Community Action, and that's who we contract with for our veteran services. And so Josh Davis is the new Veteran Services Officer. He's been a VSO since 2018, but is working directly with veterans and families since 2014. Born and raised in the Pacific Northwest, Josh is an Army and Oregon Army National Guard veteran with seven years of experience service, excuse me. He's a graduate of Portland State University with a degree in social work and community development. So Josh is going to go ahead and introduce himself and share about the work he's already done and starting in this position in June and his vision for the future.
Great. Thank you. Turn it over to Josh.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you all for having me. Hello, commissioners and hello other guests. Just I understand that we have a limited amount of time to work with, so I'm going to kind of breeze through some of the stuff relatively quickly. And you guys go ahead and stop me or let me know at the end if you have any questions, okay? Like Amanda said, and thank you Amanda for that warm introduction, my name is Josh and I am a Clatsop County Veteran Service Officer. I came into the position the first week of June and have hit the ground running and have been very busy. Can whoever is hosting this give me the ability to share my screen? Do I just click? I'm not familiar with go to meeting. Do I just share screen there?
Yes, I can do that. Just a moment here.
Okay, thank you. All right, everybody see that? Okay.
We can. Yes.
Okay. So this is just a little bit about me. I just kind of put together just some illustrations to kind of show you my path and the different things that I am passionate about and what the reason why I'm here. You know, I served in the military from 1997 to 2006, I'm sorry, 2005. From that point on, I have managed to stay busy in just the veterans' community in general. Everything from working with nonprofit organizations that I'm passionate about, like Veterans Back 40 Adventures, Healing Waters Fly Fishing, the Bowlin' Outdoors, to making, you know, making appearances on Good Day Oregon to talk about veterans' benefits and other items of note that might serve our community. But I would like to share this short video with you real quick to kind of illustrate where we're at and why I'm here. Maybe if I can get it to play. So thanks for bearing with me on that. I know that that video is interesting because it kind of starts off with what everybody kind of already knows and kind of has in the back of their mind, but it ends in a way of, it brings hope that we as a community can actually serve our veterans that are here with us. And we're a very unique, we're a unique area of the state, in particular, the state of Clatsop County really is one of the only areas in the state that has a large active duty military installation. That presents a very unique set of circumstances for all of us as community members and stakeholders to serve our veterans. And I really believe that the answer to a lot of what we are seeing in our veteran community is long-term community building. We want our veterans to be happy in our community. We want them to be productive. We want their family members to feel supported. And I believe that's up to all of us to do that. Now, there are some short-term goals that I established for myself as soon as I got here that I knew that I could hit the ground running with and that would be successful and would be helpful. First thing that I did is establish regular walk-in hours for veterans to see a VSO. You know, if you are a person that's experiencing houselessness, or you don't, you know, maybe you can't afford watch, and you don't have access to a computer, maybe because of COVID, you haven't been able to go to the library, use the internet to try to do things online or try to schedule appointments. So I wanted to make sure that we had regular established walk-in hours for veterans to see a VSO established right away. In the first week that I got here, I did that. So every Friday from 9:00 a.m. to noon, I have walk-in hours. Veterans don't need an appointment. They can just stroll in and see me. And that's every Friday. The next thing I did was conduct VSO training with CCA case managers. I'm only one guy. And I've got a lot of ideas and there's a lot of things that I want to do. But I felt that if I could educate the rest of the Clatsop County, Clatsop Community Action case managers on what it is that I do and how when they're meeting with clients to kind of see it and detect military service. And if they're able to do that and detect that military service, how to get them over to me and how it's important. Wanted to establish a bi-monthly veterans' breakfast. I think those sense of community is important. And especially with us being a rural county and being far away from Portland and far away from Salem and all of the different programs and outreach they have in that area, a lot of our veterans here in this area, they miss out, they don't get to participate in those kinds of things. So I wanted at the very least to set up a place where veterans felt safe to go there and where they felt like they could connect with me on a much more relaxed level. Sit down, drink a coffee, have some breakfast, and really get to know each other, figure out what we need, what is happening. We're in the process of creating a self-scheduling appointment portal on the VSO website. So veterans on their own terms can come on, can come on the website and see what's available to them, when they can come in to meet and schedule those appointments. We've routed all VSO appointments to one single scheduling line. So anytime a veteran wants to schedule an appointment, they're not having to figure out which phone number to call because there's three or four of them out there, and they may have to wait for a callback. One line, they can call that one line and get the appointment scheduled. Also, also in the process of creating a Veteran Services newsletter for clients and residents of Clatsop County, and that's in progress. Some long-term goals, like to plan Vet Fest North Coast 2022. I have an entire presentation surrounding that as well, and I won't kill everybody's time with that. But it's a really amazing event that I did with Multnomah County two years ago. It was very, it was very successful, and I feel like it could be really special and very successful here. Establishing it together with Veterans World Suicide Prevention Program. I met with some stakeholders within the county yesterday, and we discussed this a little bit more in detail. And I'm really excited to get this off of the ground and get it going. I wanted to secure veteran or military-specific housing opportunities. This is an ongoing thing that we're always going to have to work at. I'd like to establish a task force or a regional veteran service center for the North Coast. There are, like I said, we're so far away from Portland and we're so far away from Salem that it's hard for veterans to directly connect and get what they need. And with Washington thus being a border county and a border city, Washington being just across the river, we get a lot of cross-traffic that comes over from Washington that's looking for services. Because the way veteran services are set up in the state of Washington is very different, you know, they access that. And I would like to work with Clatsop County as a government organization and CCA as an agency to earn the military-friendly employer designation. I think that's really important as a veteran myself.
Sounds like Charles Feis, but it wouldn't be him.
If I could have everyone mute their phones, if you're not presenting, please, please mute your phone. Thank you.
Good.
Go ahead, Josh.
Okay, thank you. I also want to work close to a Clatsop Community College to establish a Student Veterans of America chapter, if there isn't already one established. I've been communicating and trying to reach out to the folks there and seeing what their plan is to reopen, how that factors in with their veterans, how their school certifying official is going to work with the active duty contingent and our veterans who are looking to go to school. We want to, I've been working closely with Chris Wilcox, who is the Disabled Veteran Outreach Program Coordinator with WorkSource. They currently are the ones that handle the planning and the creation of the different stand downs each year. They had to kind of not do it last year because of COVID, and this year it's going to be not really a stand down, but more of a hybrid of what a stand down could be. But I want to work closely with them to reestablish it and revive it so it's robust. And I want to create a comprehensive transition assistance program for active duty personnel who are getting out of the military. It's not really reinventing the wheel. There is a transition assistance program now that's housed by the Department of Defense and that all of them have to go to. But based on what I'm being told by some of the active duty folks in the Coast Guard that are getting out, the program is very insufficient. It doesn't meet their needs. It doesn't tell them who to connect with here in the area. It doesn't talk to them about housing opportunities. It doesn't tell them how to, you know, if they want to go buy a place here in town, what's the utility company they have to connect with. So we really want to make sure that they have a comprehensive assistance program to help them transition out. And so that's the kind of quick done and dirty. Do you guys have any questions or ideas or anything that I can answer for you?
Yeah, thank you, Josh. Really, that's an ambitious set of goals and to do outreach in the community and to establish that access for veterans in the community. So I think that those are all great accomplishments and also, like I say, ambitious goals ahead. Does any of our commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Bangs?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I've seen a slight internet presence from you, and I just want to say that it's appreciated. On the social media platforms, I was impressed to kind of see you skating through some of the forums, and that was really nice to see. I'm also really appreciative that you're trying to create a community, especially with, you know, the bi-monthly breakfast. I feel like a lot of issues can be solved over coffee and in a relaxed environment. So, good job.
That breakfast has been great. We have had a lot of veterans that have shown up. We've had two so far. The next one is this coming Thursday. And I invite anybody that wants to get to know the veterans in your community and your stakeholders, come to breakfast. It's at the Port Lake Cafe at Camp Realea. It's a buffet-style breakfast. And quite literally, we just, we sit around and we drink coffee and eat some chow and talk about the things that we're passionate about, what they want to see happen in the community. And, you know, I've said this later, I'm one guy, and I've got some, I've got some okay ideas, but it needs to come from the community. Our community needs to be informing us what they need. And these are great forums to do that. So I recommend anybody that wants to hear from their veteran community to come pop by.
I agree. Great idea. Any other questions, comments? Josh, anything you'd like to add or sum up?
Just, yeah, just bear with me. Like I said, it's, as you pointed out, there are some, there are certainly some lofty goals and lofty, you know, long-term plans, but I'm going to make it happen. So, you know, stand by. You shall see.
Thank you, Josh. Really appreciate the presentation and I'm glad to have you onboard as our Veteran Service Officer. Best of luck.
I'm super excited. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I can't wait to do more.
Thank you. And next item is our STR Moratorium Town Hall comments. And I will turn it over to Gail Henrichson, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, I'm Gail Henrichson, Community Development Director for Clatsop County. And I always like to start my presentations by reminding us of the path that we've taken to be here at yet another work session. So just briefly, we started back on February of this year when staff brought some proposed revisions to the board at a work session. And we got some direction from you, went back, made our revisions, and came back before your board in April. And at that time, the board decided that we should just stop for a moment, catch our breath, and take a step back. And we did that. We came back again in June to the board. And at that time, you directed staff to start looking at preparing a moratorium. And as part of that process, to conduct some town hall meetings to get some input on that proposed moratorium. So we did that twice in July, once on July 9th and once on July 16th. And you'll see all the written and transcribed comments that we received at those meetings in your packet. There's probably about 60 pages worth of comments from a various perspective of persons in the community. So, as I said, the purpose of the town halls was really just to discuss the proposed moratorium. And you'll see the comments covered a variety of subjects there. But we did get some points that came out of the moratorium. For example, should existing permits be allowed to be transferred during the moratorium period? We had some other comments that were made that perhaps the moratorium should only apply to the Arch Cape and Falcon Cove Beach area of the county, as that seemed to be where the majority of the short-term rentals are located and where we're hearing the majority of complaints and comments coming from community members. And then another idea that was related to the moratorium is this concept of appointing a task force of community members to review the two ordinances that we work under and to bring forward recommendations to the board. So today, we can certainly talk about all the comments, but the questions that staff has for the board and that we would like your direction on, first of all, having read through all those comments, is the board still interested in moving forward with this moratorium? And if so, that first reading would occur on August 11th and second reading potentially on August 25th. The second question that we have is whether the permits that are existing now should be able to be transferred during that moratorium. Our third question relates to whether the moratorium should apply to all the short-term rentals in unincorporated Clatsop County. And that would also include the urban growth boundary of Gerhart, because they are not covered under Gerhart's short-term rental ordinance. And then our final question would be whether or not the board would like to appoint a task force to review the ordinances if we move forward with a moratorium. And I know I covered that quickly. We have 10 minutes for your discussion, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gail. Do I have any comments from members of the commission? Commissioner Toyaoka?
Oh, good afternoon. Thank you, Gail, for assembling all those comments, you know, going to both of the sessions, reading the previous submissions, plus all these. You know, it's a lot of input from the community. And there seems to be a consensus. There's a division of lines, but along each lines, people seem to be very aligned on different approaches. And one would be a moratorium, you know, to allow that timeframe. Two, look at all the options. So, you know, number one, I'd be in favor of the moratorium would allow us to review all the options. And I know I've had a conversation with county manager about some other options that could be on the table. I'll defer to him on those. However, on the part two, your question, part two, transfer, I believe we should transfer those, you know, as economic value, people who purchased those homes, they purchased them as a vacation rental. They were, you know, when they did purchase them, they were vacation rentals. There has, you know, they paid a higher price because of that. And to suspend that ability during this timeframe while we figure it out, it could be some, I don't know, I don't know if there's liability to the county or whose liability is for that economic decrease, but that could be a potential hazard there. Mr. Bangs, Mr. Quila, have any opinion on that?
I think I would share your opinion about the moratorium. And certainly, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, we would restrict the transferability during that period of time. I also think the task force is a good idea. Commissioner Bangs?
I support the moratorium currently. And I agree with both of you on allowing those to transfer, just because they did purchase the home with the idea that it was a short-term rental. And I think that we're skating the lines of take at that point, if we put a freeze on that or don't transfer that. And then in regards to a task force, I'm hesitant on that currently, just because we haven't outlined what, what community members would be making up that task force. You know, just because as we're talking about potential ordinance changes, I'd like a pretty diverse group of folks from across unincorporated areas. And I've also been speaking with county manager on other alternatives in regards to this. And so, yeah, I'm one and two, a little hesitant on three.
And I think one of the other questions that Gail posed was, should this be county-wide or something specific to Arch Cape Cove Beach? And I would feel like what we do is county-wide. I think that that's kind of our, that's our task before us is to apply something that's universal for unincorporated Clatsop County. Commissioner Toyaoka?
And just to back you up on that, Mr. Quila, especially in that Falcon Cove area, it's split between Clatsop and Tillamook Counties. So we do have homes in that same community that traverse two different counties. So not only is there coordination, but, you know, it must fall under county-wide.
Mr. Bangs?
I have a question for Gail as we go through these proceedings in the future. Throughout all of these comments and wonderful things that were submitted from our community, there's a lot of concerns or claims or issues that are being brought forth. And so I, from our complaint hotline and also through the county sheriff, I'm wondering if we could coordinate some sort of methodology to look over the last year of complaints and concerns and issues and see how they were resolved, were they substantiated, so on and so forth. Is that possible?
It is. And we've actually started that from the code compliance side. We've collected that data back to 2018 when we adopted our countywide ordinance. But we will coordinate with the sheriff's office as well. That's a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with these complaints, is it possible to say either resolved or unsubstantiated or something like that?
Yeah, so we've collected the date, the name of the complainant, or if it was an anonymous complaint, what the resolution was of the complaint, and then how much staff time we spent on it.
Okay, any other comments? I guess the question of the task force and how that task force would be assembled and what they would be tasked with is probably the remaining question. Gail, do you have any more kind of, I guess, meat to what this task force would look like?
At this point, I do not. But it is something that we can bring back and certainly collect suggestions from the board.
Mr. Toyaoka, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just think lessons learned. If we do have the task force, I think from other groups we've had, you know, coordinated, we need roles, responsibilities, composition of that task force, you know, just guidelines going into it instead of just assembling and starting from there. I think it should be mapped out ahead of time, clearly identifying roles, responsibilities, objectives, and then the composition.
And then Commissioner Bangs, you had your hand up.
In regards to composition, I'm hoping that maybe we can harvest some short-term rental owners from outside of this, you know, heavily discussed area and see. you know, heavily discussed area and see if there are any other concerns or issues that we just don't know about.
Good suggestions. I mean, the alternative to having a task force would just be having our staff, I guess, prepare recommendations to the board, correct, Gail?
Right. And similar to what we did with the moratorium, we could vet those through a series of town hall meetings. And in our schedule that we did propose, I think we proposed three town hall meetings to schedule, to vet those revisions with the public as opposed to having a task force. But certainly we could work a task force into that schedule if the board so desires.
Mr. Banks?
I'm, I'm less task force oriented and more oriented towards that, you know, let's, let's have staff create something, a skeleton, I guess, for moving forward and then harvest community response from that. I'm kind of with the town hall theory or the town hall idea. I'm really, I think my biggest struggle is, I don't know if anybody's ever played the game telephone. But, you know, I, I want to be involved in that conversation and hear everything. Otherwise, you know, I feel like as the, the game of telephone progresses, the, we lose some of the content. And so I just, I like, I like it all being there so that we can all hear, I guess.
Commissioner Toyoka?
I didn't raise, but.
Oh, I, I guess I just wanted to get your feedback on whether something that staff should kind of be doing is drafting up a list of recommendations and then have them opened up for public comment during a town hall? Or if there's something that should be assigned to a task force and then have that task force provide recommendations?
You know, if we could have staff assemble and have a town hall, I thought Director Henrickson's town halls were very successful because community input was so strong and it was valid and it was received. So I think that was a great venue to get, to allow people to express their concerns. And it wasn't channeled through, you know, a, a task force or a select group. Everyone had their voice and I think that was important for us to hear and see all of that information. So I, I would be in favor more of a staff based and not to overtask our staff, which are already overtasked. But I, I would believe there's great value in having that community input.
Well, I, I, I think after hearing from both commissioners and Gail, I, I would be comfortable with our staff actually doing that. And then having a town hall to review those recommendations and provide feedback. I think that sounds like a legitimate option going forward.
Thank you. That provided some very good direction for staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next item, any, do we have anything more on the SDR scale? Is that good? We've got answers to everything? Direction. Next is the comp plan update. So draft goals one through four and policy questions. We have 60 minutes that's set aside for this. I know that hearing from Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Toyoka, they have, they've got some discussion items that they want to touch on. So we'll go ahead and start. I'll turn it over to Gail.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly, some background again to bring everybody up to the same page where we're at here. We started our comp plan update process in February of 2019. And we did that with a call for applicants to serve on our citizen advisory committees. And then we actually started our meetings in June of 2019, met for six months, took a three month pause to allow staff to work on drafts of goals one through four. And then planned to restart our process in April of last year. And of course, historically, we know what happened and that process got slowed down. We did start again in Janu- June of 2020. And in the meantime, we posted comments we had received back from the Department of Land Conservation and Development and our county council on those drafts of goals one through four. And to put it mildly, they generated a lot of interest, particularly goal four, received a lot of attention. And we were informed by Department of Land Conservation and Development and our county council that a lot of, maybe not a lot, but some of the recommended policy changes that were coming out of our citizen advisory committees were conflicting with state statutes. And so they were things that we just could not put into our comprehensive plan and pass muster at the state level or with attorneys or any, any pathway moving forward. So we, in April, the board asked again for staff to just kind of take a step back, reevaluate the process, look at the timeframe and also give the new board members a chance to familiarize themselves with the process and where we were and where we hope to be going and when we hope to get there. So we did do that reevaluation. We brought it back to the board in June. And you gave us the go ahead to move forward with one of our scenarios, which would see a completion date of July of 2022. So just a little bit less than a year from now. And what we've been doing during that pause is we did go back and rework goals one through four. We took out the policies that had been identified as conflicting with ORS and state statute. And we, we also tried to create a language that was, I'll say judgment neutral that, you know, tried to present both the facts on, on all sides or the facts and just state the facts in a neutral tones to hopefully address some of the concerns that we heard coming out of the review process. So as we restart, we're going to be doing this on a regular basis with the board. As we begin our rewrites and first drafts of future goals, we're going to be bringing them to the board first. And the reason for that is, first of all, we want to make sure the board's involved upfront so that as we get your questions and your input and your concerns, that we can understand them and address them before we bring these drafts then to the Joint Planning Commission, countywide citizen advisory committee meetings. The other reason that we want to do that obviously is that we, we have big policy questions that the, the county will be looking at over the next year as we finalize this process. And there are questions that are not necessarily easy, questions that we won't solve in a work session in 60 minutes or 20 minutes or 30 minutes. But they're, they're big questions, things about what are the roles our citizen advisory committees will play once the comp plan process is done? How do we incorporate them into a public process or a public input gathering process? One of the questions is what type of framework are we going to use to structure discussions about climate change? And I know that's a very big issue and it's in your policy memo question today, but I'm not expecting an answer at today's work session. But the whole point is to make sure the board is aware of the questions, the concerns, the larger impact issues. And so we can begin a discussion. And then that helps staff provide parameters and, and frameworks for the committee members and the planning commission to create, create their work as well and their policies. So I know that we have a lot of material in today's packet and I'm open to however the board would most like to structure your discussion about this. We could either go goal by goal, or if you want to start, you know, discussing some of the bigger issues, whatever you would prefer. And I'm really here to answer questions and take notes. So, thank you.
So how would the commission like to proceed? We want to go goal by goal. Do you have any broad themes you want to discuss first? Sounds like goal by goal. So we'll start with goal one. Commissioner Banks?
Okay. So I'm just going to go through what I observed in goal one and then hopefully we can just develop discussion from there. I noted staffing committees will increase workload of the planning staff. I don't want to increase the workload of our planning staff. I think we're reaching capacity for what they're able to do. And then the question followed, should the planning commission continue to act as a CCI? So I had a thought process when I was reading goal one. And it was in regards to, why do we have six sub county divisions instead of five, one for each commissioner? And then followed with a possible, you know, outlook of, and this is just a potential, but having those planning commissioners in each area host a town hall and then report back to their commissioner. I, I, I feel disconnected. Does that make sense? And I don't know if any other commissioners feel disconnected from this process, but I feel like if we can develop some sort of streamlined communication and the town hall idea opens up for all voices who want to be involved. Because I know in my personal experience going to some of these community action conversations and visiting with these committees, I, I personally, myself, did not feel like my voice was being heard. And so, um, I, opening that up so that we're just not limiting it, limiting it to just this committee. But allowing our planning commission to take some sort of responsibility in organizing that communication from these open town halls and, and bringing it to the commission. It's just a thought process. That was my first thought process. And then retaining the virtual meetings for the remaining five planning. I, I'm all for maintaining virtual options. I feel like especially in this time and place where we're at. I would always encourage in-person meetings because I feel like more work can be done, but having a virtual option is always healthy. Future conditions, page 88. I just, the planning commission has the responsibility of hearing from all segments of the public on land use related issues. I feel like that town hall idea would open up the conversation more than where we're currently at. And I do like the idea of bi-yearly communications, bi-yearly communications just with community members. So that's, that's pretty much all that I had for, for, for goal one. I'll pass the mic.
Okay, Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, follow up. Commissioner Banks and I were, were on a very similar page. I do, I also have realignment, you know, so that each commissioner, we are segregated by district, by geography. And so why would not the citizen advisory committees have that same delineation? So we could actually pair up and have more of a straightforward communication in that process. And I also would like to see like as much as we are doing with the planning commission having roles and responsibilities. I think the same process for citizen advisory committees would be wonderful too. And in the, as much as I hate, okay, I'm on record, I hate Zoom. But I appreciate what it brings. And instead of a, you know, I know it says virtual versus in person. I, I think we should look more of a hybrid in the future, regardless of COVID. The hybrid model would allow for greater community input. Not everybody can make the meetings or assemble in one location. And at least with the hybrid model, we can have in person and virtual, which would expand the ability for all of the constituency to join in on the meetings. So I think that instead of versus, I like the, an idea of a hybrid model being available going forward. I think that would allow for greater participation. And in, in that same token for these meetings, you know, instead of like a singular, a citizen advisory committee is great. But I think I do believe in that input of the town hall as well. Just having gone through, you know, Director Henrickson had those two town hall meetings and I just saw the great value. A great deal of input. People were very forthright. And I see where their voices are heard and I think that's very valuable. So instead of getting information from a certain number of members, you can actually hear the actual, you know, statements from people, you know, from the people of the county as they funnel through, still have the roles and responsibility of the citizen advisory. Right. But at least everybody has the opportunity to hear that input provided to that council. So I think those, that'll be my input for goal one.
Mr. Banks?
I just want to add in and, and, and it's not really in regards to the whole goal itself, but referring to school districts when announcing these meetings or referring to school districts when like having, having these meeting announcements go through their bulletins would probably be beneficial. Schools are often the hub, especially out here in rural communities, schools are the hub for community events. And so if we can get some sort of communication going through the schools on when meetings like this where a town hall is available, it would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Well, I certainly see the value of retaining the hybrid models for these meetings. And as we know, you know, COVID is still with us and that, that remains one of the drivers behind more virtual meetings, I think, going forward. I think that the idea of breaking it up by commissioner districts, I think is fine. I, I would be supportive of that as well. And then we, having the planning advisor or planning area citizen advisory committees retained. Commissioner Banks, what I missed kind of what you said to begin with about your opinion on having these intact and remain intact. Could you repeat your, your comment?
I don't think that the citizen advisory committees should remain intact per se. I think it should be more of an open town hall where the planning commission, those who are seated in that district are overtaking hosting that town hall so that they can have a full, robust conversation with anybody who wants to be involved in that conversation. I just feel like the, the community action committees are, are limiting on, on the voices that we're hearing. I want to open it up because I've had, you know, a number of complaints from, from folks that weren't allowed to share, I guess. And so it's having those voices. That would be nice.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And yeah, I kind of feel that that, that makes sense to me as well. So I would, I would support that. Gail, does that give you good direction there?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Next, goal two. And go ahead and open it up, which is Commissioner Banks, you want to go ahead and lead?
Um, in regards to goal two, page 101, policy A, I just had a question mark next to brochures. I just, part of me feels like as we're moving through the 21st century, having a simplistic brochure available, but a online, you know, robust online presence just throughout the county, maybe using platforms such as social media, media, commercial reader board. I, I'm just for a less wasteful option, I think, than a brochure option. I, I, I felt like it was limiting and, and just, I, I feel like we, we as a county could do better than that, I guess. And then consider a policy of, of requiring planning staff to educate the public when the opportunity presents or the planning, you know, commission to, to have moments of, of education and good relevant information. Maybe during those town halls, if we have a contentious issue, have, you know, some, some professionals that are professional in the area of being discussed, present, able to answer questions. Just so that we can turn this into more of an educational opportunity. I was looking at objective three on page 101, policy D. When it says all impending ordinances applicable to, to the county shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. I felt like that that comment was, was fairly ambiguous. I feel like the comprehensive plan is a high level planning tool and, and individual decisions or ordinances may be more nuanced than, than what this policy D is stating. And so I, I was just wasn't sure about. What this policy D is stating. Um, and so I, I was just wasn't sure about the phrasing on that. Um. Objective four, policy B. Um. So this. Reads like it puts the citizens advisory committee, the class of county planning commission and the board of commissions and the planning staff all on the same authority level. Um, so I feel like we need to identify who approves what recommendations. Um. It's n- not against or for, just felt like there needed to be a little bit more clarification in that. Objective five, policy A, um. It reads the county shall establish a minimum required wetland buffer adjacent to all wetlands as permitted by state statute. And so. So what does this apply to? Um, would it apply to new development, mitigation, et cetera? I feel like. That one's kind of a little, you know, undescriptive. Um, and then moving to the second note of that policy. And in policy B, the county may establish a no net loss policy for wetlands and shall require mitigation at a minimum ratio of one to one. So. In that statement, I felt like we needed to either choose the word may or shall. May means it's okay not to do it. Shall means that it is required. But then under this comment, um, when we're considering climate change and the warming climate in this region. Um, it will cause our wetlands to shrink and that a required mitigation, this could mean mitigation is required due to no human action. And I feel like that that might put our county in a pickle. Um, just, just a thought process. Um. Objective. Six, page one hundred and two. Um, I noticed that there is no bullet for economic growth and/or development. And so. I felt like because that that is in objective six, that we should have a bullet pertaining to. Economic growth and/or development. So that ends my goal two thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Toyoka.
That wasn't concise at all, was it? No, I appreciate that, Commissioner Banks. Uh. You've hit almost every single one of my notes. So the only thing I would go back to my notes and say that, uh, go back to the top here. On the citizen advisory committee, we, you know, just basically again. Um, reestablish roles and responsibilities. Of that if we're going to continue a citizen advisory committee, have roles and responsibilities identified. And I think that covers some of the other. Line items down there when it talks about county and all the different levels. Then it will establish not necessarily a hierarchy, but, uh, at least a chain of command. So for information filtering, I think that is important. Uh, how we disseminate and then how we, you know, up and down. Information must flow and I think that must be delineated upfront. And having those roles, responsibilities delineated ensures that flow of information both directions. All the other particular items, I think Commissioner Banks hit very well.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. I certainly am not in favor of objective five because I know how wetlands can be such a difficult issue in Clotsop County and. Certainly we have overriding jurisdictions in the Department of State lands and the Corps of Engineers that regulate wetlands. Um, I, I don't think we need another layer and, and certainly this is something that, uh, can be very, uh. Manipulated about and, and, and very difficult to create any development opportunities if you're going to put buffers on buffers and. In a known at loss on, on wetlands, it's just, uh. Not a feasible restriction to put in just knowing what we have on the ground and what things are considered wetlands. Which are marginal properties to begin with and. Um, it certainly can be a real barrier to, to, uh, economic development going forward. And I think that, um. Addressing climate change in something, uh, this, is that the other question about, um. You know, raising impacts of climate change and incorporating that into, um. The land use impacts. I just think that's something that we want to stay out of myself. Commissioner Banks. You're not, you're not, you're muted.
I would concur with you. I feel like that is a state level conversation and not a county level conversation. And I feel like the, you know, legislation is already being, uh, put into place or moving towards that direction.
Correct. Commissioner Toyoka.
Yes, and to your point on objective five, I mean, if you look at some of the delineations currently on file. Some are not accurate anymore as, you know, the land use or, you know, climate or whatever, there's been, you know, multi-factor changes in the North Coast. And some of those delineations are no longer true. And so to just blindly go off that. And say we have to have a one-to-one or have a set policy based on that, I, I would say has to be. You have to look at what the current situation is and evaluate from there.
Yes, I completely agree, Commissioner Toyoka. The wetland inventory is changing all the time and that's not because. Things are changing. It's just that better information is being used to, uh, enforce and, and corroborate these delineations. So. That's, that's very true. Okay, do we have any more comments on goal two? Gail, do you have what you need on, on that? Okay. Let's move on to goal three. And Commissioner Banks.
Um, on page one oh nine, uh, second paragraph. The presence of invasive weak should be weeds, species, just, uh, flight edit right there. Um, and then. Going into agriculture and the continued demand for housing. Um. So paragraph one. Uh, I need to see the study to understand if this is like. I don't know if this is the context. Um, the first paragraph reads okay, but I just want to read the study. Um, and so if somebody could email that to me, that would be awesome. Um, the second paragraph. Kind of conflicts with paragraph one where it states that there is an adequate buildable land in the unincorporated Clotsop County. And then it proceeds to say that building should be focused inside city limits. Um. The statement here pushes the focus on housing inside city limits instead of empowering citizens to use their own land as they see fit. Um, so. You know, when I look at it, space inside the city limits is very limited and the current housing crisis for our middle income families has shown that the city and the county are simply not able to keep up with the demand within city limits. So I would consider dropping the entirety of the second paragraph there. Um. The agriculture and wildlife, um, so. I would say leave it to the companies to decide on appropriate landscaping and fencing. If damages increase, they are in a better place to determine, um, what financial damages are enough to warrant additional effort. Um. Then we got into hemp. I'm not sure if any of the financial issues here are relevant for the comprehensive plan. Um, this is, I also highly subject to change and once it does, the plan is outdated. So. Um. Why is hemp pulled out and spoken of in this detail when other crops such as dairy and nursery are not? I don't know. Uh, maybe consider only having the last paragraph. So it makes it clear that these crops are legal. Um, because I feel like that that needs to be, that that needs to be clear that hemp and, and marijuana are, are considered legal. Um. And then I go into. Objective one, policy A. Um, Clotsop County shall encourage agricultural activities by preserving and maintaining agricultural lands through the exclusive farm use zone consistent with ORS law. Um. And then the county shall encourage and support increased residential densities within incorporated areas and urban growth boundaries. Um, and then the policy C, uh. Clotsop County should avoid converting agricultural lands to urban uses or other non-farm uses. Um, so I don't think that there should be restrictions on building in unincorporated areas. Uh, many of these are family farms. Um, I'm living on one where. They break off a small piece for family members. That is exactly what my family did. Um, this feels like it would make that very, much more difficult if not, you know, focus on the impossibility of that. And frankly, I'd like my children, if they still wish to live here, for me to be able to break off a small bit and, and have them be my neighbor. Like I've been able to do with my husband's family. Um. I think we should focus on incentivizing farms and finding different ways to encourage use instead of regulating its use. So more carrot, less stick. Um. Focus on expanded funding maybe and county programs or grants that could be used to help for small farms. Um, there's a bullet on agrotourism, but no comments on how the county will work with farms to promote it. Um, I think agrotourism is great. I think it's very valuable, um, especially for our rural area and the demographic. And so. There's that. Uh, moving on to objective five, policy E. Um, the county shall discourage non-sustainable practices that damage soil and air quality. That's already illegal. So I don't know how relevant that is for us to restate it. Um, policy F. The county should stay out of, so the county shall promote and use. The use of locally appropriate plant species and discourage the use of herbicides and pesticides on agricultural lands. I feel like the county should stay out of that conversation. Um, that's being addressed at the state level. It's also highly political. Um, and I don't feel like we should politicize, um, currently. And then policy G, the county shall encourage organic farm practices. Um, so organics are, is a pretty broad spectrum. And I, I don't really feel like the county should get into a situation where we're picking winners and losers. Um, I don't think we should politicize farming at the county level. As it stands, there's over twenty different types of farming methodologies that are used. Um, for varying degrees and across our, you know, our landscape. And I feel like let the landowner and the farmer make the best choice for their land and their economic value. Um, I, I don't feel like we need to be, um, insinuating. What a private landowner should or should not do with their personal farm. Um, because already we have laws in place to protect our environment. And as we've seen at the legislative level this year, it's a continuing conversation at the state level. So.
Gail.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. I don't, I don't want the commissioners to go too far down a path that you may not be able to go down. So with goal three, goal three is looking only at the resource lands, which are the exclusive farm use zone and our agriculture forestry zone. And a lot of those regulations are already set in state statutes. So similar to Forest Practices Act where, um, we're not supposed to be urbanizing the farmland. Where we have a very con- constrictive list of uses the state permits us to have on those lands. We're going to be bound by those. So I understand the concerns that you have, Commissioner Banks, about the need to encourage more housing in, in rural areas. But we may not be able to do that in our exclusive farm use zones, but we could do it in possibly. To some extent with some regulations in our residential agriculture zones. So I just wanted to be. Clear that there will be limitations on what we can do in terms of some of your recommendations.
And I, I love it because we've had these conversations already before with county manager on, on zoning and what we can and can't do in our unincorporated areas. So I totally appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Gail, for that clarification. I think it's important that we're consistent with what. Uh, state law and what is already happening with zoning. I, I thought a lot of what Commissioner Banks. Uh, comments were, were good ones about supporting the farming industry and doing what we can. Uh, within this to support activities, but not to get to the micromanagement level about what activities. Uh, we want, uh, to encourage and what we don't. I, 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 I'm not real comfortable about that as well. I think we should be. Promoting the industry and agrotourism and all of those things in general. Um, I like the idea of, uh, you know, processing coal storage distribution foot hubs if we're, if we're making those types of activities easier, that's fantastic. Um, but then beyond that, I, I don't feel real comfortable about getting into that. Commissioner Toyoka.
I feel the same. I mean, it's, we cannot micromanage. There's already a lot of state statutes and, you know. Being supportive is one thing, but micromanaging not only landowners, but, you know. Um, how we direct our, our land use is, is not right. It's too, it's. Too micromanaging of that, of that level. We just need to stick to the state statutes and. You know, not go delve deeper in that aspect.
Okay, do we have any specific open questions on goal three, Gail?
No, thank you.
Okay.
But. One question. For Director Hendrickson on, you know, on objective one. I read other stuff. So is objective one mainly about like the hemp industry? Because I've read so many other things that, you know, trying to get into, you know, wanting to. Ex- expand agricultural business, agricultural zoning for the hemp industry. Is that primarily what objective one is about? Is, was, you know, drafted towards that?
No, not at all. Um, actually it was more towards making sure that consistent with. Uh, statewide planning goal three, that we are. Not letting development encroach into those farm areas, those farming zones, that we are. Uh, making sure that uses that are incompatible with farming. Say when you have a neighbor who moves next to a dairy farm and then complains about the, the smell. We're, we're really setting goal one, the objective one to, to really be protecting our farmlands and making sure that they're here for future generations. That's the whole intent. So.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, I'm just reading some other, other, you know, publications and I just don't want to sacrifice one crop for another, you know. It's not about moral or legal. It's just, let's not sacrifice one for another or, you know, encourage one over another. I just want to make sure that we are consistent and. Level playing field for all the landowners.
Commissioner Banks.
You actually reminded me something, of something, um, objective five, policy F. Um. And I, I don't know why I forgot it, but the locally appropriate plant species comment. Um, so that is actually extremely limiting because our locally appropriate plants are like huckleberries, strawberries, salau, cranberry. Um, it basically. Says we're not, we're not supporting tomatoes or greenhouses or corn. Um, so. Yeah, and I don't know why I forgot that, but John, thank you. You brought that up to me. You reminded me.
Okay, no other discussion on goal three, we'll move on to goal four. I know that Commissioner Banks has something to say on goal four. Commissioner Banks.
Oh goodness. All right. So starting with, uh, goal four. Let me scroll. I'm sorry. I'm. I think I'm stuck. What page does goal four start on? I'm stuck on page one twelve.
It's one sixteen.
Thank you. Okay, so goal four, page one sixteen. Um, I'm looking at page one seventeen when it says those buffers would be applied to non-forest activities conducted outside of resource lands. So FPA buffers, um, are concerning tree removal within a certain set distance of fish streams. Um. So what are some examples of those non-forest activities that we're, we're thinking of? Are we thinking ODOT? Are we thinking? Um, I, I just, I don't know where we're going with that statement. And so I just wanted, um. Some clarification. Otherwise, do stream buffers need to be mentioned at all? Or just are we to state that they are, that they are to comply with FPA rules? Um, and if those rules change, then we change. Um, I feel like maybe we're, we're skating into a different. Um, area here. And then. Looking at the historical perspective, um. I would consider removing the comment on how some community, community members raise concerns. This is, I feel like it's a leading statement with bias. And so it's only telling one side of the story. And unless we want to get into telling all sides of the story, I would just try to stay out of the story if possible. But leave on the comment about how Clotsop County is unable to restrict FPA permitted activities on the forest resource lands. I, I think that that statement is is necessary. Squirming into the recreation zone. The only things listed in recreation are ODF campgrounds. And so why aren't we listing Fort Stevens Federal County Campgrounds? This is a county document, not a state document. So I I think that we maybe need to add a few things into there. So then we go into the drinking water. And so again, we have a qualitative sentence in there that only speaks to one side. And so, and it expresses bias, um, in my opinion. Um, and so I would just be careful. It is a great, the the Clotsop County's forest lands are also often a source of potable water from many downstream communities. I think that's a great statement. It's factual. And I think we should just leave it at great statements and, you know, not squirrel into a political arena. And then objective one, uh, policy F. Um, I highlighted these developments, if allowed, shall be cited and designed so not to preclude forest management whenever possible. So I don't know about how realistic policy F is. It's a very nice sounding idea. But if somebody builds a campground, they're unlikely to want to deal with it, deal with, you know, potential political fallout around any kind of extensive forest forest management. So do we as a county want to be a lightning rod that forces that to occur? I'm not sure about policy F. Policy I actually kind of raised some farming issues and forestry issues. So policy I states off-road vehicles shall be strictly confined to establish rock roads in order to prevent erosion, steam degradation, damage to young trees, seedlings, and disturbance of wildlife and its habitat. So that's kind of self-defeating, I think. And that's a personal, you know, statement. But so currently, um, ORVs, there's areas designated in Clotsop County that um would immediately be violating this rule. Um, ORVs are used for forestry applications. They're used by small landowners, farmers. ORVs are often used to manage young trees and seedlings. ORVs are used for forest fire mitigation issues. ORVs, tractors, four-wheelers, gators. ORVs are used by private landowners all over the place. And so I'm really concerned about this statement because it would be extremely limiting to our our landowners. And then yeah, that that one I'm 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 pretty concerned about. And then we get into tourism and ORVs and, you know, ORVs and tourism are are, you know, hand in hand. And then Tillamook, you know, it's one of their their fastest growing basic tourist attractions right now. So anyhow, on to policy J. Existing utility rights of ways should be utilized to the maximum extent possible before brand-new rights of ways are created. So my question is, what if an existing utility right of way crosses the stream or a sensitive area? As this policy states, it would require people to continue using that without developing a route of less impact. And so that concerns me. Uh, policy K, roads are expensive. So this one states roads in forest areas shall be limited to the minimum width necessary for traffic management and safety. So policy K, roads are expensive. A landowner is not going to build something larger than they believe is necessary. So the width can vary greatly depending on what types of vehicles are being used. I would leave this to the landowner who can best determine how wide the road needs to be to fit their needs. I don't think we should be weighing in on road width in private property. Policy L, forest landowners shall be encouraged to actively pursue methods of complete utilization of wood fiber on the ground after harvesting. So wood fiber is actually encouraged to be left on the ground. It's utilized for fertilization purposes. Downed wood and woody components encourage habitat for numerous species, including salamanders. So I don't even want to go down that route because I feel like we're going to be counterintuitive when it regard, in regards to how best to manage our environment. Policy L, oop, policy N. So I'm not sure what a type two procedure is. So Gail, what is a type two procedure?
So a type two procedure is, uh, it's a conditional use permit and it goes out for a 10-day public comment period, but there is no public hearing on it. So then it would become a director's decision.
Okay, well, then I have, I I have no comment on policy N. I I don't know. And then policy P. So policy P. These lands, the statement, these lands are often intensely managed by full-time professional foresters. That's actually not true. It's depending on the circumstance. So I would probably just delete that sentence. I don't think it's necessary. So yeah, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, I guess my first question, you know, the lead up the entire goal four would be maybe county council or or Director Hendrickson as far as where are we with the lawsuit? You know, in terms of when we opted out, we kind of, we lost our place at the table, which has a downstream effect as far as, you know, our voice for HCP and forest management practices. So, you know, I think those, that's a big issue that helps. How do we, you know, it it plays every single objective on our, in in within the goal four. I think if we, how do we get our seat back at the table to discuss, you know, within the HCP and the forest management plan? Are we, are we in that process or, because without a voice, I think a lot of these objectives and goals are almost moot, you know, if we don't have that voice.
Okay, I will defer to the county manager or county council on that question for status.
Chair Quila, Mr. Toyoka. I think that that's a conversation that we will probably need to go into executive session and talk about in more detail. There are, it's, it it continues to be a very fluid situation with the lawsuit and where we are with where the counties are and where the state is with the appeal and any conversations that may be taking place between the plaintiffs and the state. And so, um, so we will schedule that and have that conversation with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and just correct me if I'm wrong. I I just believe that those outcomes will have a great effect on our ability to to work on our goal four.
Yeah, I would say, Commissioner, there's a lot that is wrapped up into that, into that lawsuit and what the ultimate outcome of the lawsuit is. And so I think it's, it's good for us to be contemplating what those im- impacts may be as we as we plan for the future, which is what obviously the comprehensive plan is. So.
Two of the, and I agree with Commissioner Toyoka and what our county manager stated. I wondered about the stream buffers and the wildfire issues. Are these issues that we want to go into with regards to the comp plan goal four? Questions, stream buff language or addressing wildfires? Commissioner Bangs?
Well, currently, stream buffers and wildfires are being addressed at the state level. I think being part of the summary of what what goal four is all about. I feel like that that's valuable because, I mean, it's a concern. But I would leave any statements of what we do in regards to stream buffers and wildfire to follow state law because I know that they recently were having conversations at the ODF level regarding wildfire response for communities. And so I I feel like if we can kind of, you know, follow the state in regards to their decision-making, I I am always hesitant to put more rules and regulations on our community members and be too, I think, I don't know how John phrased it, but to micromanage, micromanaging, I guess. I do think, though, that we should address the lawsuit and the HCP also because those are going to be impacting us here in the near future. And so I think that, you know, just having conversations regarding how how we put that into the comprehensive plan would be nice.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka? Anything on uh, stream buffers or wildfire?
No, and I agree with you, Commissioner Quila. It's, it, you know, very much, they're, you know, topics of discussion, but they are covered under state guidelines. And much like uh, wetland mitigation, I don't think we need to add layers. I think we should follow state guidelines instead of adding, adding to layers to that guideline.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. I completely agree with that. Um, Gail, do we need any more on this?
Uh, nothing more on goal four. You hit the questions that we were looking for some guidance on. Uh, we'll be back next week with goal five, which is a big goal. So uh, thank you again for your direction and time.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you, Commissioner Bangs and Commissioner Toyoka for good input and feedback. And um, appreciate us having this discussion today. So we will move on to the public health update and to our interim public health director, Margot Lawlich. Margot?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, so a brief update, uh, Chair Quila, um, how much time do I have? Five minutes? Is there something after this update?
No, there's nothing. So take whatever time you need. I think this is very important and I think we can, I think we have some questions for you as well.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm just going to give all of you a brief update. I just got off the standing Tuesday call with my colleagues across the state as well as the Oregon Health Authority Leadership Team. So hopefully I'll have some new information for you around how they're going to be reporting breakthrough cases going forward. As you well know, cases are increasing. Um, and based upon the sequencing that the Oregon State Public Health Lab is currently doing, most of the breakthrough cases and the increase in cases are due to the Delta variant. And what we're learning about those who are vaccinated is that they are still carrying a high viral load of the Delta variant and they can transmit it. Now, that does not mean the vaccine is not working because the vaccine is working. They are all working. What it means is that we can still get COVID. We just will not get as sick as someone who is unvaccinated. And more likely not to end up being hospitalized. Over 95% of the cases that are hospitalized right now, and those are increasing. The hospitalizations are those who are unvaccinated. Um, I'm going to slip in some good news. We're doing more pop-up clinics. There's a little bit more interest by the community now in getting vaccinated as well as triaging some of the misinformation that they're receiving on different news sources. We had just a small pop-up clinic today, but I think we vaccinated, I think, 30 or 31 individuals, either those who were not interested previously in getting a second dose or have not been vaccinated at all. So this is good news, very good news. Our cases will continue to go up. We have multiple outbreaks. I think we have five or six outbreaks going on that started last week carrying into this week. Again, this is not surprising. After June 30th, we expected cases to increase, although we didn't know as much about the Delta variant. So that's obviously a critical variable in all of this. Um, masking is not a requirement in most places. And I don't think the intention in, from what I'm hearing with many of my colleagues across the state is to make that a mandate and certainly not from the governor. Um, and so we will expect to see more cases. The recommendation is to continue to mask indoors. Again, that's voluntary, but it is a very strong recommendation because of the transmissibility of the virus. We are doing a lot of testing. The hospitals are doing a lot of testing. In fact, I have a call today with one of the hospitals just around communication to the public around who needs to get tested when. And it sounds like the guidance around testing is about to change again. So I'll be providing updates to my community partners on that very soon. Let's see, in all of, for all vaccinations in all eligible age groups, they are continuing to get vaccinated, which is is very good news. And as I said, as we're moving into August, our hope and intent is to incorporate COVID vaccination into our routine school age immunizations. I am part of the standing weekly meeting with the superintendents discussing the resilience framework, how that gets implemented, how, what masking will look like. Of course, we all know at this point it's mandatory. And um, there are also three options for screening and testing in the schools. They are not required. Only one is required if someone is symptomatic, but districts may opt in or opt out. So I expect that to be more of a conversation going forward again with my school colleagues. There are cases that are not being reported. And of the numbers, we have 39 new cases that are being reported. I can tell you that's underreported. Those are those who are getting tested. Again, we must remember while the cases are going up, the majority of cases are actually testing negative. So what we're hearing about are the positive cases. It's not that everyone is getting tested as primarily positive. So I think that's a very, very important fact to remember and to communicate. We are going to start seeing a couple of reports coming out on hospitalizations around the percentage. And we were already reporting this. We started reporting this in our county and gathering the data last week. But the number of hospitalizations that are unvaccinated or breakthrough cases. And again, as we're just reporting our cases each week in aggregate, we're also communicating the number of those that are either breakthrough or unvaccinated. And again, the majority are unvaccinated. I think those are the bullets at this point. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. We are in surge conditions again. And so the hospitals are getting overwhelmed in many places. They are caring for people in their emergency rooms because they do not have space for them on the floors. The state continues to support us in our contact investigation and or case investigation and contact tracing, and will continue to do so. Although I'm meeting with them this week to expand that operation locally. And I've already been in contact with our IT department. It requires quite a bit of training, so you can't just launch that. We have, we're, have three more testing kits and equipment coming this week. Our testing that we did last Friday was very busy. It ran three hours over the the scheduled end time. And again, some of that is the worried well. It's not individuals who need to be tested. Yes, if they want to travel, there's a certain kind of test they need that's considered valid. But we are, continue to use every testing opportunity and every test result as an opportunity to have a conversation with that community member about their concerns about getting vaccinated. And I think after August 16th, we will be able to co-locate our testing. I've mentioned this to you before, but we have more of a firm date. We'll be able to co-locate our testing and our vaccination and more centrally locate that operation for ease of access to community members. Happy to answer any questions. And as always, if I don't have the answer, I will try to get it for you.
Thank you, Margot. And I can just validate that hospitalizations at Columbia Memorial Hospital are higher than they've been at any point in the pandemic. Thank you, Margot. And I can just validate that hospitalizations at Columbia Memorial Hospital are higher than they've been at any point in the pandemic. I know the testing demand continues to increase. I really appreciate our interim public health director requesting regular weekly updates from the hospitals so that that information is readily available, that people know that folks in just local, in our hospitals that are, that are hospitalized. And getting the idea of how many are vaccinated and who is unvaccinated is very important. And it is good for messaging out in the community because most, most of these are unvaccinated individuals. Commissioner Banks, I know you had some questions. I'll turn it over to you.
Um, as you were talking, I was writing a few things down. So we have like a lot of kid activities and kid type programs around our community right now. And I was just wondering if we could get some conversations going with Anchor Academy, our private school. I know you're meeting with the superintendents, but I was just trying to get more people in the conversation, more people informed. And so if we can reach out to our private school, some, maybe some of the kid programs. There's a lot of confusion about what's going to be going on here in, in the fall. And so, and there's a lot of information playing around. And so if we can try to get a rain on that information and make sure that the information is factual, it'd probably be very beneficial for our community and for the panic button that is being hit right now. I had a question about at-home kits, those at-home test kits. I know that FDA has temporarily approved certain kits for at-home testing. What are your thoughts on that?
So I don't, I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have a lot of thoughts on the at-home testing kits because it's just because it hasn't been our focus so much. And also when we do get a report of an individual who says they tested positive, positive at home, we don't require them to get a second test. We accept it as a valid result. And then we follow up on that as if it's a true case and do a case investigation. What I can do is find out from O H A because of the testing options that are being implemented voluntarily in schools in the fall. If they have some type of reference material that speaks to the at-home testing kits and the validity of some over others. So I'll find that out.
Perfect. I just feel like as we're going to enter flu season, I don't know. I mean, it could be a valuable thing for families in the future. Like if a kid pops a cold, do they immediately take them in to get COVID tested? Or, or do we have like a list of, you know, try this? I'm just trying to problem solve because flu season's coming.
Right. Well, you're, you're, you're problem solving along with a whole team of folks at the state and part of where they're really piloting this at-home screening. And in fact, probably more than a month ago, probably two months ago, I was having this conversation with our regional testing coordinator is in schools where they, or communities where they have poor vaccination rates, right? Because if they're not going to vaccinate, then we need to start screening and focusing on that and empowering families to be proactive in that way.
And then I agree, there is a contingent of folks staying off the grid, I guess, is a layman's term to describe what is occurring. I don't understand it, but I just, I agree with your observation that there is that occurring. Can you guys do like some sort of diagram or, or something in regards for businesses? Say a parent or say an employee who's vaccinated gets the disease, what happens with the rest of the family? Can they go to their, their childcare facility? Do they stay home? Do they quarantine? Like there's, there's, it's so hard, I think, for, for families right now to try to figure out what they do when, when, when something happens. And if we can give them some sort of step one, step two, step three, instead of, you know, close the business and we're done.
O H A does have actually a very good graphic around isolation and quarantine. And before the vaccination campaign, it was a very important document for referencing. And so I'm going to, I just made a note to circle back to that and see if the details of that have been updated, obviously, since we've been vaccinating. Also, last week I extracted, so the investigative guidelines for COVID-19 in Oregon are 41 pages long, keeps getting longer. The section in there around isolation and quarantine of vaccinated versus, versus unvaccinated, close contacts is very specific. I extracted that the end of last week. And it has been shared out. It's a little too wordy to just share it out as a public document. It would probably create more questions. But we can work, if O H A hasn't updated, we can work on simplifying that in a way that's more accessible to the community. I also provided it to our PIC Center or Communication Center as a reference tool for all of those who are answering calls from the public. And most of the calls are actually around testing.
And has, has the state actually released what is going to be happening this fall? Or is it just still in the, the rulemaking process? They haven't actually developed the actual rules for our school districts?
Exactly. There's the resilience framework has been released and that's sort of general guidance. And next week, yeah, at the end of our call today, that usually O D E is not on this Tuesday call. And the plan is to have them on the Tuesday call next week. So we'll have both O D E and O H A online with all the local public health authorities at the same time. So hopefully they're going to extend the time of our meeting because I'm sure there'll be many questions.
And then kind of just a last thought process. I, I, and this is, you probably, probably can't solve it. But I feel like our response, just as a state, has been very reactive. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can become more of a proactive narrative, proactive meaning healthy living. Take your vitamins. Be active, healthy eating. Because all, I feel like the impacts of any virus, I mean, this one included, I know that this one is squirrely and it isn't, doesn't have like a definable reason why more people are impacted in certain ways. But I just, if we can kind of turn our conversations, because I know, I know that, you know, with the flu vaccine, you still get the flu. Like if you're exposed to the flu and you have the flu vaccine, you still get some version of the flu. And I feel like that this is, this is very similar. But if, but if we can, can push a healthy living narrative again, I feel like it's kind of gotten lost in, in our crazy and in our reactions versus action. And it's just a, I don't know. You probably can't solve it. I'm just putting it out there.
Point is well made because I think how people define healthy and living has been deeply affected by the pandemic as a whole, not just the state of Oregon, right? I mean, we have a very, we have a wonderful health promotions program at the county. And there are times definitely when we need to react like right now. And, and, but the nuance of that is how do we infuse that positive messaging as well? And so I think that that's just something we need to continually remind ourselves to do. And you, you made a comment I didn't share earlier, but last Thursday and Friday, I did a direct outreach to, you know, our a variety of our agencies in the community, just to check in on how they're doing. Part of it is with outbreaks popping up. But just reminding them that we're here, we can vaccinate. Do they have questions? They need any education to happen? Anything like that. I spoke with Northwest Senior Disability Services with C B H. I've had a number of conversations with them. I had two go-to meeting sessions planned with the faith community this week. Just, you know, it's totally voluntary, but just that facilitating and nurturing that connection. And really, nothing has changed in the sense that many of those who are not vaccinated, even if they're serving vulnerable populations are not and will not be vaccinated. So again, it's well within what other protective measures do we need to have in place? And then do you have the resources that you need to have those second and third line interventions in place? And so we are being very proactive and engaged in that on an ongoing basis.
I'm sorry, this is my last thought, thought, or sorry. I have a lot of thoughts today. Just my last thought or question is, in the future, as we're, we're getting into this, this system of where we need probably testing, flu season's coming. Is there a resource for our businesses? Say, if they are needing a test or, or a resource or, because I know the schools are going to be doing voluntary testing. Is that something we can open up for other people if they're interested?
I'm not going to be able to answer that question at this point in time. I'm sure those questions are circulating. It gets complicated in that, you know, it's that balance always between true diagnosis and self-diagnosis, right? And then one of the reasons at-home testing can be very valuable and a useful tool for a variety of illnesses or conditions, right? We have at-home pregnancy tests, right? But at this point in time, the fact that we have, at-home tests are not reported. When the schools do testing, it goes into a statewide portal. And so we can look at all of that data as well as in public health tests, clinics test. If we don't have a system in place and a span of control, we lose the ability to have a sense of what's going on. And we don't catch the deviations, for example, like the Delta variant. And so, or any other variant. And so it's that balance between what is in the best interest in the health of the community versus making sure that we have some span of control so we get all the evidence we need to be able to make the right decisions at the right time. So, yeah. I do think that we're testing, we, you know, we just need to continue working on that messaging. And as I said, I have a meeting this afternoon of, there's the worried well who are getting tested, who really may not need to be tested at all, which are overwhelming parts of the system. And then there are those who need certain types of tests in order to be able to travel. And then there are those who are symptomatic, right? And so again, that's just ongoing education and consistent messaging.
Thank you with your patience for me.
Any other questions? Commissioner Toyoka, do you have any questions?
Not necessarily questions as much as a comment. Just wanted to say, Margot, appreciate you and your staff very much. The, the biggest thing is the consistency and delivery of your message. It's, you have, you're very factual and you're very consistent in your messaging. I wish we could get that out of our state and federal levels. I think a lot of the, you know, the people in our county and the, in the country really are, have anxiety because of that inconsistent messaging. There's just, you know, too much variables that they bring in and the way your, your messaging is to us and the county. I don't have apprehension because I know there's a plan and I know the messaging is clear. And like I said, I just appreciate, wish we had that at the state and federal levels as well.
Thank you for your kind words. Messaging, I wouldn't, if you don't mind, Quayla, just, you know, I, I of course am receiving plenty of emails from the public and phone calls or from businesses. And some are really, I mean, for me, it gives me a pulse in the community and it does get into that consistency. And one is around should outdoor events continue to happen, right? I'm getting a lot of questions about that. There is no mandate or requirement to suspend or cancel outdoor events, outdoor gatherings. Now, common sense tells us and what we know about the transmissibility of the virus, whether you're indoors or outdoors. If you're sitting shoulder to shoulder and everybody's unmasked, you're laughing, coughing, sneezing, you know, blowing your nose, blowing kisses, whatever you're doing, right? Sharing straws, you're going to increase transmissibility, right? When you're indoors, it's a contained space. So the particulate matter can circulate, particularly if there's poor ventilation, hence the value of masking. Now, common sense would say that there's no reason for people not to gather outdoors. We can create space. We have fresh air. It's good for this sense of community, social gathering. And but I would say that particularly as you move in larger gatherings, maybe there are groups of people who are socializing, sitting at a picnic table, eating, something like that. It would be common sense to wear a mask, right? Because we, we just don't know. And so it's not a mandate. This is absolutely not a mandate. To me, at this point, it's common sense, right? What we know about how the virus transmits and also what we don't know. And so it is so important for our mental health. It's summertime for community to be able to gather and to celebrate being outdoors, have picnics, right? Have those barbecues. But again, thinking about the populations that we're with, how close we may be with them, whether or not we have our own health conditions that may compromise our wellbeing, is to just always have a mask with us. And if it makes sense to put it on, put it on. Definitely if we're indoors, as I've said to all of you, even from June 30th, I've been masking even when I go indoors. Kind of a habit now, actually. So I just, I did want to clarify that about canceling events outside. There's no indication that there's going to be any kind of mandate, certainly from the state, to implement any measures like that.
Commissioner Toyoka?
One last question for Margot is as far as our, you know, where our K-12s are, you know, we're getting ready to go back to school. In a, you know, there's that masking versus unmasking of our students, you know? If there are any metric, because I know the infection rates on that population, that age group is very, very low. And from last year's school, the, you know, masking and the mental health issues that come with the masking and isn't there an offset or a metric we could show a school district saying, hey, we have to weigh this? You know, you can mask for less than 1% transmission possibility. Or if they're masked, you've got a 20-some percent chance of mental health issues, you know? One has to outweigh the other. Or, you know, you have to take, at least take those in account. Is there that metric available we can provide as they decide?
Yeah, I don't think that there is a metric available at this time. I would not be surprised if one did not get developed over the next few weeks. Currently, the recommendation, actually requirement is that that's all students mask. I think again, and it's very complex, right? Between masking three feet, six feet, when they're indoors, when they're outdoors, and the undue burden on adults who are trying to facilitate the educational growth of students as well as, quite honestly, just the healing and recovering that they're going to require in returning to this next school year. So I would expect when I report to you next, hopefully after our meeting next week with O D E and throughout this week, we'll get some more details on that.
Yeah, please share them. I'm very concerned about that issue.
Commissioner Banks?
I just, you know, in our childcare discussion that we had yesterday, I alluded to the mental and emotional exhaustion that not only our childcare providers, but our teachers and our students are going through right now. And how hard it is for us to pivot like we have been and discussing the mental health of employees that I work with and, and the folks that were, that I'm in contact with. And I, you know, I never want to get into the debate of mask or don't mask or vaccine or no vaccine because I'm not a medical professional. My family, we do what, what we feel is healthy and responsible for the, for the, for the moment that we are in, I guess. But I just, I, I like, you know, to hear that we are also contemplating the, the children's mental health in this situation. the, the children's mental health in this situation. And, you know, I'm going to speak personally, my second grader hasn't actually gone to school without a mask for a year and a half. And his language and his reading and everything has been impacted. And it's not for lack of trying from the teacher's perspective. It's, it's that he can't see the mouth to enunciate. And, and we have students that are missing, you know, that social emotional. I see, you know, with the children that I work with, a social emotional immaturity that, you know, that natural growth hasn't occurred because, you know, faces and, and, you know, social cues are a big deal. And through this pandemic, they've been just so separated from, from life and, and social and emotional growth. And so I just, as a teacher and as a parent, I'm, I'm kind of dreading what is going to come out of the box here in the next couple of weeks just because I so desperately want my children to not have the additional anxiety and the additional social, emotional issues that they've had. My personal children, but also all of the children that I've been working with. So I, I, I just want to be thankful. Thank you for bearing with me and being understanding and being very scientifically factual in your conversation with us because I feel like that that is needed right now in our county. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I completely agree, Commissioner Banks, appreciate the comments. Thank you, Margot. I did have one question, and you answered it when you started in your report about the Delta variant and how prevalent it is in Clatsop County. When you are tested, how do you know that it's the Delta variant or another strain?
So that's a great question. So we don't know actually how many Delta variants are, have been identified in Clatsop County. The data is reported regionally and statewide. And the way they do that is through sequencing of specimens. And, and I don't know, but I'm assuming that it's random sampling as well within particular regions. And then statistically, they will calculate that out. And so I think, where did I, of, just of the sequencing, they just did 63 of the 68 specimens that they sequenced were positive for Delta. So it's very, it's very high, it's very high. And because of the transmissibility, it's, it's, it's out there. It's out there. I mean, I just, you know, I think we all know people who are personally positive or have gotten sick, who have been vaccinated for months and who are maybe mildly symptomatic and others who are, are more symptomatic and presenting like a nasty cold, but they're not feeling so great.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Banks?
In regards to the Delta variant, what are, are there any different impacts on children than, you know, the, the regular COVID that we've been having?
Yeah, that's a great question, actually, that was just asked in the meeting. And I will share with you, well, I mentioned there's a monthly report on sort of the unvaccinated and breakthrough cases. And as I said, that's going to go to, I think, every two weeks now. But there just really isn't much data. Dr. Paul C. Slack, who's our head epidemiologist, was saying they just don't have that data available yet. So I'm sure we'll hear about it when, when it happens. There was also a question of whether or not the breakthrough data and the variant, we're getting the general variant data. But in terms of, for example, the hospitalized cases and all of that, if it would become a dashboard? And they said, no, some reports will not become a dashboard because there's a lot more narrative and explanation for context that needs to go into reporting the data. So it's, they need to do it as a PDF.
Good questions, and, and thank you so much, Director Law, with your report and, and Q and A, that very helpful. And I'm glad we took the time that we did for it. We don't have any other items on our agenda this evening, so, or this afternoon, I should, saying this afternoon. So we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everyone, and have the good rest of your day.
Thank you.